Management operations before then the city clerk has a couple of announcements.
Honorable, this meeting is being held both in person and electronically. We do have on the phone with us, we have the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Cunningham. We have Councilmember Santa Cruz, Councilmember Durham, and Councilmember Februs will be participating by telephone. There will be no agenda items that require any type of audience participation for this meeting and so therefore we have not expecting an audience for this meeting. It is being live streamed on YouTube and individuals wishing to view this meeting or participate in this meeting can go to the YouTube channel and watch the meeting in person.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk.
And Mayor, just a couple of things to add to that if I might. I would ask that as the other elected officials chime in that they identify who they are. And secondly, that for purposes of this meeting, since these are extraordinary times we're in, we are suspending some of the rules, the mayor and council rules that normally apply and would limit the number of council members that could participate telephonically or remotely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We will start the COVID-19 update with, and I'd like to organize it in a particular way. There's really two conversations, two segments to the conversation that we're having as a city of Tucson, as mayor and council and as community. One part of the conversation is a citywide public safety conversation and the other portion of the conversation is city services and how we protect our city employees. What I'd like to do is that we start with the city services and how we protect our city employees and then move on to the discussion on citywide and public health. So since we're starting with city services and how we protect our city employees, I'd like to ask our manager to give us an update as to where we are with that.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Several items to report, some of which you received as early as this afternoon, but I'll try to go over them very quickly for you. So first of all, just a reminder, we will go to a city services or virtual city services tomorrow. The intent is that anyone within city service that can work remotely will do so. The idea is to test the systems, both the infrastructure that we have in place as well as the procedures and policies we have in place to ensure that we can continue to provide the fundamental services. The services that the public sees should not be impacted. That's the intent is to truly provide those services, but oftentimes in a remote manner. Wanted to give you a quick update on some of the specifics, the things that we are doing. Economic development is a big topic for us. We have instituted small business navigators that we will be gathering to assist small businesses, not only with maneuvering through the SBA website, but also providing them with resources that we have available within the state and feds. So we'll be doing that. I can tell you that we will use existing resources to do that. I think that ultimately it will be important for us to continue to band around our bread and butter, which is our small businesses within the community. Also exploring opportunities for childcare for some of our essential services. I understand that the governor, one of the governor's mandates has been to keep essential services such as childcare in place. We do have concerns that some services might no longer be offered, so we are working with our Parks and Recreation staff to shore that up if needed. The challenge I can tell you will be less than five-year-old children. We are equipped for five and up, five to 12, but the five-year minus are a little bit of a challenge for us. So we are working with partners to make sure that that service continues for our essential staff. There's been many questions. I believe Councilmember Februs is on the call about our homeless protocol as well as our HCD operational changes. We sent you a memorandum earlier today that outlined what guidance we're getting from the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness as well as the CDC. So we have outlined, we are ceasing our homeless protocol in terms of displacing folks that are in homeless camps. That is at the advice and recommendation of the CDC and the Interagency Council. What that translates into is our navigators will go out and educate the homeless that are in camps and ensure that they understand what is going on with the pandemic, ensuring that we are not dispersing them into the community. In addition, you heard me last time report, we are ceasing evictions for non-payment. That will continue for the foreseeable future. I believe, Mayor, you had mentioned in your report last time it's through the end of April is when we will continue that. The lobbies are closed, but we are continuing with our appointments in HCD by appointment and also over the phone. So we are still making ourselves available as best we can, but we are discouraging folks from coming down and doing it in person. Last thing, and again, there's a variety of more detail I can get into, but I do want to introduce Chris Anderson. He is our incident commander and I want him to outline for you our emergency operations center. We have stood it up. It has been up and running for several days, actually almost two weeks now. Chris is a fire department assistant chief and there's two parts to his presentation. One is to outline for you what we're doing and what that means, but also outline for you the protocols as well as the chain of command that we are instituting across the system. So Chief?
Honorable Mayor, Council, thank you for having me here. I'd like to give you a little brief about the great work that our folks are doing to protect the city and kind of give some guidance regarding this pandemic break. Over the last two to three weeks, our leaders and our directors have all been working good watching this COVID-19, how it's affected the nation and how it was going to hit our community. Last week, based off of the exposures that have been hitting across the country, we decided to go ahead and implement the incident command system. The incident command system is a system that's a national framework. All FEMA events follow the ICS system and one of the more important items with that is any federal reimbursement from FEMA, we follow the ICS system. I believe you were given a incident command roster that we have, the 207. There's some key components with that and how we have them. There's six of them. First one there is going to be your, the incident commander. Their objective is to develop incident objectives. You have your operations section chief that identifies, assigns and supervises resources needed to accomplish the incident and the objectives. We also have a planning section that tracks resources. We have a logistics section. They order the resources. We've implemented a finance and administration which procures and pays for the resources. We also added one more section and that's the safety section and that's for our members. We know that our public safety and our general employees are going to be exposed to this and this is an opportunity for us to navigate our folks just so that we're taking care of them. As the incident commander, I have the ability to fulfill what functions need to be filled based off of the incident and as it grows or as it shrinks. Currently in front of you, as I said, you see all the key players and recognize some of the names and where we've put them in important positions in which they're very familiar with. We understand that this is a Pima County Health Department issue and that's why they have lead on this. But to give you an update, what we're doing besides our ELC that we, and incident command that we've set up, every day we're meeting with county and getting briefings. Their briefings are Monday through Friday at 9:15. We're working very close with them. We've also, after our briefing, briefings, we've set up our own ELC and it's kind of a virtual ELC at Fire Headquarters and we briefed the team there. At 13:30 every day, we are briefing our city manager and SLT on what changes, if any, are going on and where we are. And on the weekends, we are also having a true virtual conference with city manager, any of our section chiefs and ELT. This is very fluid and very changing. Every day, we see significant changes. Today, we're currently up to 42 confirmed positive tests in Pima County. Again, we're very, working very close with our county partners. We are also having some folks sit in in specific positions at the county and they're communicating with me and Mark Temp, who's the deputy IC, with their county ELC director probably three to four times a day. And I'll accept any questions at this time.
Mayor, before we get into questions, I wanted to wrap it up with a couple of other quick things. Again, we want to test the system tomorrow. I will be able to report to you on Thursday morning. That's the expectation. We'll dissect how this rollout went and then we'll be able to figure out all of the pieces that we might need to tweak. As you mentioned, our employees are extremely important. They will continue to be the bread and butter for this organization and the ability to provide those services. We're working through the mandates from the feds on leave and how all that works. And I know there's concerns on the part of the employees. What we've said is we're going to get through this, just have confidence that we are putting our best foot forward here as an organization. Also, just to remind you, daily, the directors report to me. We do it both at the 1:30 conference call for the ELC as well as before 8:30 there to notify me if they're having any trouble providing the services that they're required to provide. With that, Mayor, the staff and I are available to answer questions. I know there are some details that you would like. I've got a few staff members here. If there is something we can't answer, we'll send texts and we'll try to get it to you before the end of the meeting. If not, we'll just have to get back to you later. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Can we make sure that the organizational, incident organizational chart is emailed to all of us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate it. I want to just start by saying how impressed and how reassuring it is to have such an amazing team at the helm of the city of Tucson. In times of emergency and urgency, we are all tested and I can just say how impressed and happy I am with the caliber of our leadership in the city of Tucson. That's our police department, our fire department, our city manager, our city attorney, our city clerk that have been working day in and day out for the benefit of not just the residents of the city of Tucson, but each and every one of our employees. I am so proud. I am so proud of the work that you're all doing. For me, it's one of the most important things that we can provide our city employees and the residents of the city of Tucson is reassurance that we have a competent team. And so, thank you so much for your hard work. I know that many of us are working 24/7 on the weekends. I mean, just in my conversations throughout the weekend, I'm very happy for the work that we're all doing together in solidarity for the benefit of our community. I just wanted to start with that and open it up for my colleagues on the council if there are any questions. There's the Vice Mayor and then we're going to go to Councilmember Kaciacik. Vice Mayor Cunningham?
Can everybody hear me okay? No. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Really quick, I just wanted to commend the work. Thank you Assistant Chief and Manager for the response to everything we've done so far. Right now, as all of us are fighting this, we're not fighting this, but addressing this issue on four fronts. The first front is practicality in how we can help the people in our wards and our community get through this situation. community get through this situation. And the amazing thing is that not everybody, but 99% of the community has responded so positively. The input that I'm getting from both citizens, business owners, community workers, they're all saying the same, they're all in it to move forward, they're all in it to find ways to ameliorate all issues regarding the COVID virus. That being said, the second, I guess the second one after the practicality piece is philosophical. And the philosophical piece is this. We don't really, as we all know, information's changing by the hour, the number of infected, the number of fatalities, the number of people being more able to test, but the one kind of coherent thought is this, and that is that the more we restrict movement voluntarily or involuntarily, the better the chances that the curve is lower and lower. The other philosophy that I think is being discussed is that at some point, to truly get out of the woods the fastest way, at some point, movement will have to be extremely restrictive. And it's going to go that way, whether we like it or not. It's going to go that way either from the nationwide standpoint or a statewide standpoint. And for us as a community, it's our decision on whether or not we want to voluntarily do that faster. I think that's better for us. I think that lowers the chances of us ever being in a situation where we don't have enough hospital beds. We know there's going to be a swell probably this week, and so the philosophical piece after the practical piece are how we do it. The third piece is the economical piece, and a lot of that, I've had some discussions with the manager about what we're going to do to pick up from the lag after this is over. You know, we have a lot of things we wanted to do this year to stay competitive in the city, and so there's some things on the back burner that we're going to have to postpone, but there's also some things we can do with the cooperation of the state to make our budget whole. And when I say whole, not, there's not a hole, I mean hole with a W, like make our budget whole for next year. And there's some opportunities we have there that will allow us to do that as the economic recovery occurs after hopefully this is over. And finally, the final piece is the treatment piece, and that is the hope that we can find the correct vaccinations and drugs and cures for this disease. So those are the four ways this is being addressed, and I think Tucson has done more than its part to help address them. I think this pandemic will bring our community closer in a weird way, but it's something that we have to get through together, and I think we are, and I think that we should be transparent with our community and let them know that we're probably going to have to restrict movement even further, but we want to do it in a way that is in cooperation with the county and the state.
Did you have a question, Vice Mayor?
And that concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kazachek.
Mike, which departments are going virtual tomorrow? Is it across the board, or is it one or two? Can you kind of describe game plan?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kazachek, the game plan is for everyone that can go virtual and work remotely to be remote tomorrow. So what that means, for example, our street crews, obviously, they're not going to work remotely. However, the way that we deploy them will change. Our facilities crews, those kinds of things, we're going to try hard to keep people from physically coming into a job site, or excuse me, a facility so that they get their assignments remotely and/or electronically. So the vast majority, I suspect, based on the numbers I've gotten from departments, a little better than two-thirds of our workforce can work remotely now. We are going to look at either redeploying and reallocating resources beyond that as well as assignments. So one of the things that we're doing is, for example, the hotline that we've established, we will be staffing that with folks that don't have opportunity to work remotely. So we're giving folks opportunity to help in other areas that maybe they hadn't thought about previously.
And your expectation is that as far as workflow is concerned, us communicating with you with one another, that would be the same as it is today?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kazachek, that should not change. As a matter of fact, that should not change with any of your communication with any of the staff, and that's part of what I want to test, is to make sure that you still have access, but not just you, the general public has access to the services they need, and that's one of the pieces that'll be important as we go forward.
Okay, well, thanks. I want to echo Rahina's statement about thanking staff and thanking the rest of the council and the mayor for the work that we've all been doing. This has been a really stressful time for all of us, and I'm also impressed with the way everyone's stepped up, you know, the staff who are here, those who aren't. I have four different areas I want to touch real quickly. One point, though, as Paul just mentioned, the number of confirmed cases is going to continue, has continued and will continue to increase daily, and the medical evidence is clear that this is far from over, and most medical reports suggest it, we're at the front end of it. We as electeds, in collaboration with staff, have to continue to work together to put policies into place that protect the public, our own employees, and the business community. Those decisions will have to be made quickly and in a constantly changing environment. This is unpredictable, and our ability to wait two weeks for the council to get together again will sometimes be truncated. Our charter gives the mayor certain powers to act during times of emergency such as this, and the public needs to see that we're united and that we have her back. I believe it's important that today, this governing body, and I wish staff could vote on this as well, so the community can really see that we're all in this together and this is one for all and all for one, that this governing body express our full support for the actions that have already been taken and that will need to be taken in the days ahead to manage this crisis. And that the reality is that the terms of the emergency proclamation that the mayor issued last week, feels like a month ago now, will need to be extended and expanded Yesterday, Governor Ducey issued an emergency executive order that really circumscribes some of our local authority. I would point out, though, on March 18th, Louisiana had seven COVID deaths. Yesterday, they had 34 in nearly 1,400 cases. Their governor issued a stay-at-home declaration. I believe that Governor Ducey needs to do that, or we're going to crash our healthcare system. With that, I have a motion that I would like to offer. Move that the mayor and council as a full body endorses and supports the mayor's March 17 determination that the COVID-19 outbreak constitutes a local emergency under Arizona law and the Tucson City Charter, and that we also find that this is continuing and expanding emergency, that this continuing and expanding emergency endangers both life and property within the city and is going to require extraordinary measures to protect the public health and safety. We support the mayor's use of the emergency powers given to her under the Arizona law and to protect our residents and our own employees. I also move that the City of Tucson, through the mayor, continue to coordinate with Governor Ducey and other key decision makers in responding to the impacts of this emergency, and that we urge Governor Ducey to take additional actions, including immediate issuance of statewide shelter-in-place orders directing the closure of nonessential functions and businesses. At least 17 other states have already done this. These orders provide for continuity of essential functions and operations throughout the state while slowing the spread of COVID. Finally, as a part of this motion, I would move that as a part of the actions that we take in response to this emergency, we take steps to provide assistance to our local businesses and to their employees.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any continued discussion?
I would just add one more to the motion, and that is, earlier today, you signed a letter with some other mayors, and it also included reference to evictions, and I would add that to the motion as well, that we support the comments that were included and incorporated in your letter earlier today.
Thank you, and it's about issuance of statewide moratoriums on all evictions and foreclosures.
And Mayor, members of the council, and this is for the record, Mike Rankin. I just saw a note that the governor has issued an executive order today relating to evictions. I haven't had a chance to go through it, but it looks like it delays evictions of tenants who have been personally or financially impacted by the COVID-19 situation, for example, by losing a job.
I saw that piece of news as well. Governor Ducey issues order delaying evictions for renters impacted by COVID-19. It was just announced maybe about an hour ago, less, I think. All righty, so there is a motion and a second on the floor. We will have to vote by roll call. So, Mr. City Clerk, roll call, please.
I have one question.
This is Councilmember Paul Durham.
Does Councilmember Kazachek's motion call for a stay-at-home declaration?
Paul, I don't have that authority. The mayor does. I'm suggesting that the governor immediately issue one, and that if the mayor decides that we need to act ahead of that, that is within her authority and discretion, and that we support her in that when and if it happens.
Okay.
All righty. Roll call, please.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
This is Councilmember Santa Cruz. Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachek?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Thank you so much, colleagues. I really appreciate your support. Mr. City Manager?
I did want to make a comment. You know, this is extraordinary times, and so I wouldn't normally say this, but I will vote for the employees. And to Councilmember Kazachek's point, we vote in favor of this as well, because it has to be crystal clear that we are in this together. We will work hand in glove with you, Mayor and the council, and this community to get through this. I have absolute confidence in our team, as you outlined. I appreciate the comments about myself, but it really is our team, and I want you to know that we are absolutely behind you, council and the mayor.
Thank you.
Three more quick areas.
So there's some quick questions. What I do want to do is move from city services to the citywide public health and safety. Is it related to the citywide public health and safety?
It relates to the motion sort of tangentially. One, I mentioned that we should be expanding the areas that are covered right now. Some areas that have come under question are hookah lounges, massage parlors, there are waiving fees for open-for-business temporary signs, those kinds of things. And I'm not sure the most efficient way to engage that, perhaps the two mics could weigh in on how you would prefer us to move forward with those policy changes. Some of it's in addition to the emergency declaration, though, as well. So that would be something that the council doesn't do, but that Rahina would do.
Mayor, Councilmember Kazachek, and I'll let Mike address some of the key pieces to that, but I would just suggest to you that I've instructed the staff to, and I'll use the term loosen, requirements for business signage, opportunities for businesses to continue to advertise and do their thing, if you will, making sure that we don't allow the bureaucracy to slow that down or become a barrier in any way during these times. So I have already authorized that. I would appreciate getting at least some ratification from the council that that is the direction, that is the impression I've gotten from you, but I'm just letting you know, we're already moving in that direction, and we'll continue to do so on that part.
And part of the conversation on Governor Ducey's executive order describing essential services, that's part of the questions that mayors around the state are concerned about, right? Because it adds to the essential services hygiene locations, and the Marana mayor, other mayors throughout the state consider barber shops and hair salons and nail salons and spa services like massages concerning and nonessential at this time of emergency. And so that is the clarification that mayors want from the governor. We feel that absolutely in this time, we want a uniform policy throughout the state, but the City of Yuma might have different needs than the City of Tucson, as Nogales might have different needs than Safford. And so we need to be able to move based on the number of cases in our cities, in our counties, differently than Yavapai County, for say. So that's the clarification, and if we are to move together in partnership with the governor, then he needs to act swiftly in order to protect and maintain the health of our communities throughout the state. So we will be adding additional pressure to the governor, because here in Pima County, what is the number of cases? Forty-two confirmed cases. A day ago was 25. And so in Yuma, they just found their second case. So in the way we act, we have to maintain some flexibility in order for cities and towns in our region to act swiftly, and if the governor is not allowing that, then we have to make sure that we push him, because we're not going to wait to see more cases in our county. That's why the next 10 to 15 days are crucial to act, to take the necessary steps to remain in place if that's required for the health and benefit of our community. And so, thank you so much for your words, Councilmember Kazachek. What I'd like to do is, it looks like we're naturally gravitating to the citywide?
One final comment.
Sure.
And I'll back up. We're, like several of us have said, we're at the front end of this. It's important that we also be having conversations with the medical community about what objective metrics that we should be looking for in order to start rolling back some of the things that are going into place. If we go into a stay-at-home shelter-in-place policy, and the medical community, not only locally, but all over the world, is admitting that we're figuring this out as we go along, that we need to have some criteria, not locking them in now, but that the conversation needs to happen, and the conversation will be, what metrics can people be looking at? Is it 14 days of no new cases? Is it 28 days? What are those metrics so that we can give people some science-based criteria that we're looking at, saying, once we see these things, then we're going to roll these policies back and begin, putting life back to normal again? So it's just important that the community not only have this, oh my God, look what's happening, but also hear some things that we can look to the science community for as ways, as signs that this is easing up, and we're seeing that in some areas internationally already.
Well, and that moves us to the citywide public health portion. I wanted to give you an update.
Mayor Romero?
Yes, Councilmember Santa Cruz.
But I, again, Councilmember Santa Cruz here. I was wondering, so that like, I think we, most of us want to contribute something to the conversation, if we could just kind of go through the names on the council to make sure that everybody gets to say their piece and that certain folks don't just dominate the conversation, specifically around even some of the city services, because I would like to say something.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask, if there was any other questions regarding the city services and the safety of our employees. Would you like to start?
Yes, yes, I would. So I am wondering how we are responding to departments like Calvinian Community Development with like appropriate amount of staff and resources, as we know that for the 40% of our elderly and 40% of the folk who use the services are disabled, how are we making sure? how are we making sure, or homeless, how are we making sure that, um, that work is still continuing and we're kind of, we're, we're serving them? So, I just want to make sure that we don't, like, lose sight of them as, like, an essential part of, of what we're talking about right now. Um, I had the opportunity to take calls today at the, at the, the city hotline, and, um, there's still a lot of, especially seniors who aren't on social media, are not getting a lot of the information that we're putting out as a city. So, I was hoping that you, Mayor Romero, could, like, how do we make sure that, like, news outlets and radio and TV are also sharing, like, their daily, um, broadcasts? Because I know that people who are seeing them on social media find them super helpful and, like, we're doing something, and folks who are not on social media think that we're not doing anything. So, I'm just hoping that we can, um, continue to, to highlight, you know, this information for PSA, but maybe also having it on our city website, that it be prominent, so that, uh, you know, folks see that, yeah, that united front, that united voice about what we're doing.
So, just to, I'll, I'll, um, talk about the Ps in terms of communication with the public. As you all know, I've been videotaping, um, daily messages for the community, and I videotape them in both English and Spanish. I share, uh, I share every video on all my, my social media sites, so my official Mayor Regina Romero Facebook page, my Instagram, and my Twitter accounts, both of them at Tucson Romero. And those videos are also shared on the city of Tucson webpage, which is Tucson AZ.gov. You can go into the COVID-19, uh, page, and those videos, both in English and Spanish, are on the website. And my staff has, at the mayor's office, have been helping translate any press release into Spanish. All press releases, the mayor's office, and I know that our, um, PIO office has been sharing them with media throughout the region, both, uh, English language media and Spanish language media. And so, we're trying to get the information out there in, in, at least English and Spanish, uh, so that we can keep the community informed as much as possible. On the housing community development side, I will let City Manager Ortega respond to you on that.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, Councilmember.
Can I have another question for you, City Manager, after you answer that one?
Okay, um, thank you. So, Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, so the, the reality is, is that we are doing the best we can to get the word out. One of the things that we are finding is that our traditional methods of communication aren't necessarily as effective and quick at getting the word out. One of the things that I've talked to the staff about doing is the potential of using radio, uh, up to and including broadcasting informational, uh, PSAs, if you will, on, on the radio, so that folks that don't necessarily have access to social media or other methods can, can get information. We're also reaching out to some of our, uh, other contacts, other media sources, uh, because I think, uh, Councilmember Santa Cruz is right, we, we have to do it on multiple fronts, uh, not just in, in bilingual fashion, but also making sure that we are, we're hitting it on, on various, um.
And on that note, we do have a, um, present, we have a couple of people doing sign language for this meeting as well, because, um, our public information team, um, has received feedback, and we need to make sure that we also have sign language available for the community.
So, so, just to, uh, wrap that up, I think if, if you as councilmembers or members of the public have some media that you think might work better than what we're using, please let us know. As Councilman Kazatchek mentioned, this is a very fluid situation, and we're going to react quickly. If you identify some means about which we can get, uh, information out, we certainly are excited about doing that immediately.
Okay. And then, um, my, my other, I guess, concern that I have about, about working remotely, and then as tomorrow we go, you know, abroad and on essential, um, city staff to be working from home, um, this thing about not being able to forward the calls right to people's cell phone. Um, so, I'm just wondering, is there a way that we can share an internal contact list of, like, people's phone numbers? Because I feel like sometimes issues come up, and they're pretty urgent, and the whole idea of just, like, leaving a voicemail and then waiting who knows when to get a callback is a little, it's just so frustrating. And, so, I, I don't know if that's something that we're thinking about, or, or if we are trying to push our IT technology to be able to forward calls. Yeah.
Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, uh, so, just so you know, the, the reality is, we can forward calls. Uh, the difficulty is it burns up two lines. So, uh, what ends up happening is our infrastructure is almost doubled, so you have the line coming in and the line going out now tied up, and if someone is on the phone for an extended period, it taxes the infrastructure. We've got some things in play now that we're expecting to roll out by the end of the week. Again, I'm expecting that, that will be probably one of the things we'll hear loud and clear tomorrow, is how the phone system works in terms of the ability to transfer, uh, lines back and forth. So, Councilmember Santa Cruz, uh, we are on it, and just a quick shout-out, thank you, Lane, for volunteering at the call center, you and Elizabeth. We really appreciate the help there. Councilmember Santa Cruz and her chief of staff have been volunteering over at the call center, and I really appreciate her doing that. Thank you.
It's, it's very enlightening to see, you know, to hear the issues and that people appreciate having another human person, um, to talk to than just, uh, recording. So, um, thank you for making that happen, and I feel like it's kind of providing a framework for how we can do city business, um, in the future as well.
Any other questions? Councilmember Santa Cruz.
Madam Mayor, this is Richard Feimbrass. I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Absolutely. Go right ahead, Councilmember.
Channel 12, Cox, is there any way we can utilize that again? Uh, I know a lot of people watch, uh, media, and if we put messaging on that, that would help us, especially with, uh, on a daily basis, keeping people abreast of us issuing.
Mayor, Councilmember. Mayor, Councilmember Feimbrass, that is, uh, an avenue that is no longer available to us. Uh, the streaming was a decision we made, uh, some time ago, uh, actually a few years ago, went, uh, away from the channel 12. We're certainly exploring other media to get the word out and make sure people can, uh, participate and watch these, uh, proceedings, and we'll continue to work on that.
But it, it just says, it's a blank message on there. It says, you know, channel 12, uh, the city of Tucson is going through some construction of it. We just put the mayor's PSA out there, and I think that would be better.
Do we still have access to the channel, channel 12 on cable?
Mayor, I'm not sure if we do or not. I know we don't have the technology in place. We may have the actual physical channel, but, uh, go ahead, Lane.
I spoke, I spoke to the council today anticipating that question. They do still have a peg channel. It's mostly dark, except for their meetings. They're going to fire that up, and they've said that we're welcome to run any PSAs we create, including messages from the mayor on that channel. So, we'll have full access to their channel, as our communications and messages are much the same.
Thank you, Lane.
Okay. So, we are still able to get our PSAs out there. I know Cox, in my conversations, was willing to do some things with getting PSAs out.
This is Lane Mandel again. Yes, Cox is willing to run some PSAs as well.
What channel were you talking about?
The county's peg channel, I believe, is channel 96.
Okay, so it's not 12.
Don't quote me. It's not 12, but it is in that same.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Low-definition spectrum, yes.
Mayor, this is an opportunity for us to, uh, reach out and do some things with, with them in partnership. We'll certainly do that.
Absolutely, and Cox, uh, has offered assistance in putting PSA, PSAs out there. We will, um, pursue that avenue, Councilmember Feimbrass. In the meantime, in the meantime, I think it's important that we, uh, direct people to the city of Tucson YouTube channel, and in that channel, we have all of the recordings, uh, done by, uh, both police and fire department and the mayor's office.
Madam, Madam Mayor, there's a lot of my constituents that don't have access to that revenue. They don't have that avenue. They don't have computers, they don't have the information. They rely on the radio and the television.
Right. We will, noted.
Can the city attorney remind the mayor and council of what our courts are doing during this, uh, crisis?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Feimbrass, uh, this is the city attorney, Mike Rankin. In short, the courts are doing everything they can to minimize, uh, human interaction in the court process. The courts, uh, have extended court dates out into May, uh, so that people don't have to come to court for their appearances. Um, we have put in place a whole series of measures, uh, to allow folks, uh, who might need even additional continuances, to, to accomplish that by phone, or by email, or over the internet, so they don't have to come in to do that. Fine payment schedules have been delayed, so folks don't need to come in to ask for that to happen. Um, we have, uh, some core functions through the courts that, for constitutional reasons, we, we have to take care of, namely, handling cases of persons who are in custody. Um, we can't just delay those cases out while they wait in jail, um, but we have employed every, um, strategy we can so that we can accomplish those hearings, uh, over video conferencing, uh, review hearings. We're doing, uh, we're, we're giving, um, uh, direction to our prosecutors to, uh, try to resolve cases as best they can, rather than continue them out. Uh, and we are participating tomorrow in the virtual city, uh, uh, that the manager described earlier, and we'll have a minimum amount of staff, uh, on hand to handle those types, types of mandated, uh, constitutional requirements.
Thank you, Mike. And then I was looking at, uh, response from the county administrator, reference the corrections bureau, and, uh, can the mayor and council be reminded of TPD's policy of cite and release?
So, Mayor Romero and members of the council, um, TPD, just as we're trying to get the folks out of jail who are incarcerated by wrapping up their cases quickly, uh, TPD's policy effectively is that, um, uh, these folks arrested for misdemeanor, uh, criminal conduct, um, unless there's a statutory or other requirement that they be booked into custody, are using cite and release as much as they can. And we are scheduling the initial court date, uh, the arraignment, which is normally scheduled something like 14 or 15 days out from the day of that type of citation. We're pushing that out to the full statutory limit of 30 days, uh, to try and buy even more time before more court dates, uh, start hitting the calendar.
Thank you, Mike. One last question is, I got a couple of calls of people having their rent raised, or they're going to ask them to move off, because they want to do remodeling of their, of those houses. Uh, is there anything about eviction that fits into this category of raising rent?
Mr., um, Councilmember Feimbrass, there are a couple of, of things. One, that, um, the city of Tucson moved on immediately is the suspension of evictions in city of Tucson-owned public housing, and as of an hour ago, it looks like the governor also signed a moratorium for evictions and foreclosures in the state of Arizona. And so, that is incredibly good news, and that will protect many, um, residents of Arizona from eviction, evictions, and I, I do not see a date attached to, uh, to the moratorium. A hundred and 20 days. It will remain in effect for 120 days. So, it looks like, um, the governor is responding to my and other mayor's calls, as well as state legislators' calls, to protect people from losing their homes in this, uh, in this time of crisis.
Does that include rent increases, Madam Mayor?
That I would not be able to answer right now, but, um, it does protect people from evictions, even if that rent, um, if that rent goes up. Other than that, I wouldn't be able to give you additional information.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are you?
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak about city services and the, the safety of our employees? Mr. Attorney?
Mayor, uh, members of the council, I did want to address, uh, one issue with respect to employees, um, directly. Um, as we've all said, these are extraordinary times, and, uh, some of the rules with respect to employee leave are going to have to be adjusted administratively. Uh, and, uh, so, as part of your direction and part of your discussion, unless there's objection, I, I hope it's clear that you support giving the manager the administrative authority he's going to need to, to administer those types of leave policy changes. Included within that is, you've, I'm sure, read that the federal government, uh, has changed, uh, some of the rules with respect to FMLA, uh, as well as mandating employers, uh, provide emergency paid sick leave, uh, during this time. Uh, so, we will absolutely be implementing those. Um, we won't be bringing back code amendments for our future council meeting, et cetera, because we, we got to get moving on that now.
Absolutely.
On the, on the change.
Councilmember Kazatchek.
You said that they're federally mandating, uh, sick leave, 12-week sick leave. One of the concerns we had, that we just had the rug pulled out from under us by Ducey yesterday, was the hair salon operators. Are they now, you know, for five, employers of 500 or greater, are they now going to be, um, eligible for paid sick leave under what you just referenced?
Uh, Councilmember Kazatchek, uh, I'll be honest, I don't know. I mean, I've been focusing on it from the, uh, city, uh, employee side.
Okay.
The key pieces that we will be implementing, uh, and figuring out, because even though the, the changes have been made, uh, the federal government has additional guidelines that they have to issue, and they, they anticipate issuing those on April 2nd, so we're waiting a little bit to see what the details are. But fundamentally, there's two pieces. There's the emergency paid sick leave, um, under which employees will get up to 80 hours of, uh, paid sick leave to use, and won't have to exhaust other types of leave in order to qualify for that. And there's various triggers, um, that make the employee eligible to use that leave. Uh, the other piece is, relates to the 12-week piece, which is on the FMLA side, and that is, uh, it provides, um, that the employer will pay two-thirds, I believe, of the employee's salary after a 10-day period, um, uh, for employees who have to take time off, uh, to care for, uh, a minor child.
It's going to be a whole new world by April 2nd.
Yep.
So, that's.
Yeah. One of the things that I, I, I've been talking with, um, Mike, um, Mr. Ortega about, is that from the day of the emergency declaration, March 17th, that we keep track of all of our expenditures, um, on sick, FMLA, any additional expenditures that are needed to cover this emergency, because there are three federal packages of relief that are coming from, um, the, uh, the House and Senate, and so, we need to make sure that we, that we keep track of, of everything that we're expending on in these, in this time as well. Any other of my colleagues that have any questions about city services or employee safety?
Your Honor.
Vice Mayor.
Uh, just really quick to echo what you just talked about. Uh, I want to have part of that discussion in the executive session with, uh, regard to the packages. I'm not sure how we're, how they're able to notice it, but I think it's a strategic decision on, um, partly it's a strategic decision on, uh, how we leverage opportunity for recouping some of the losses that we're going to take as a, as a city, as a municipal corporation.
Vice Mayor.
I wanted to ask the manager, ma'am, I wanted to ask the, the. I wanted to ask the manager, I wanted to ask the city attorney whether or not that's permitted.
Vice Mayor, I, the executive sessions were not written in a way where we would be able to have an executive session about this issue, but I do have updates on the second portion of this conversation in my communications with congressional, the congressional delegation. But right now, I want to be able to give an opportunity for any of my colleagues that might have questions on city services. And if not, we can move on to citywide and how we protect the public and what we're doing generally for the residents of Tucson. Thank you. Well, let's, it looks, that's a perfectly way to start the discussion with citywide and protection of the health and safety of our public. Besides the communications that we're doing with the community, trying to communicate through videos, I have seen all of your newsletters come in, and they also have a lot of information. I have been in daily calls with the governor's office. We've been communicating tremendously with the governor, and he's been having calls daily with mayors around the state. That communication is invaluable, because every day, they give us information about what's happening with unemployment insurance. They give us numbers and resources that we can share with you all and with the public. They just created a 2-1-1 call line for anyone, both in English and Spanish, that want, have questions, any questions about unemployment insurance, about any state issue. So, you can also share with your newsletters and the community that there is a 2-1-1 system for those residents in Arizona that do not have access to the Internet or not have access to a computer to get online and research this. I did forward a resources page that I sent to the city manager, that he forwarded to all of the council members to hopefully receive them. I will keep communicating with you on anything that I receive from the governor's office that I think is good information for you all to share. As Steve had mentioned earlier, the governor did sign an executive order describing essential services and limiting cities to order any people, any residents, from leaving their home during COVID-19. The essential services is very, very broad, and it also includes payday loan locations and golf courses, and that is something that the mayors around the state felt were nonessential. He also called out hygiene locations, which really limits cities and towns and counties throughout the state from preventing or suspending the hair salons, nail salons, and everything that we talked about earlier. What we did see, and I'll ask our city attorney to discuss a bit what the executive order means, but there's confusion from mayors throughout the state that the governor said, in his order, said that any order restricting persons from leaving their home due to COVID-19 will be consistent with advice from the Arizona Department of Health Services, and any such restrictions shall be coordinated with the state prior to the issuance of such orders. And so, I wanted our city attorney, Mike Rankin, to talk us through this, because there's different, there's a different perspective on how we see this particular piece of the executive order, in order for us to move forward with any emergency declaration that is, that is good for the City of Tucson. Mike?
Mayor, members of the council, so, two things there. The, I would encourage the mayor and council, if you have your discussion today, to share any of your particular concerns about the types of businesses that were included in the governor's executive order in, with describing essential services. The mayor's mentioned a couple with golf, and then the personal hygiene services. But if there are others, I think it's important to get those out so that the mayor can convey those concerns. I know the other mayors in the other jurisdictions, and I've been talking to the city attorneys too, would like to see some clarity as to what the intent of some of those exclusions were, whether the exemption or exclusion for personal hygiene services was really meant more in the medical field context, and less, you know, a haircut at the barber. So, it would be really useful to know what was intended there. I will say, though, that fundamentally, the list, although it's a long list, right, of essential services, that's pretty consistent with what you'll see in the other states. Most of the states that have issued the stay-at-home or shelter-in-place orders or advisories, they point to the essential infrastructure services that have been developed through the Department of Homeland Security and are posted on the SEMA website. But it's been a little different state by state as to how they describe each of those 16 categories of essential services. And I do think it's fair to say that Governor Ducey's description was more broad than the other states that I've looked at, at least with respect to those specific examples. So, having clarity there would help a lot. Secondly, the mayor referred to what I think is in paragraph 2 of the executive order, which is not a prohibition. It doesn't say that no county or city can issue a local emergency order or proclamation that requires people to stay at home. What it says is that prior to any such order that restricts or limits a person's ability to leave their house, then there first has to be coordination and consultation with the Arizona Department of Health Services. So, we're going to have to see what that means. If ultimately, the governor issues a statewide order in the near future, then I don't know that that's going to be a big issue to begin with. But it isn't entirely clear to me what that paragraph 2 means. The fact of the matter is, is that if nonessential businesses and services are ordered closed, I don't know how important that second piece is anyway, about a restriction from people to travel to those closed businesses or services. So, there's a lot of conversation going on about that in the legal community and among the mayors and other decision-makers. So, we'll try and keep you informed as best we can as we see how this plays out.
To follow up on that executive order, mayors across Arizona and I sent a letter, started working yesterday immediately on a letter to Governor Ducey. It was Flagstaff Mayor Coral Evans, Tolleson Mayor Anatovar, Somerton Mayor Jerry Anaya, and Winslow Mayor Thomas McCauley. We all signed this letter, and basically, what the letter is, is that we want to make sure that we're in partnership and solidarity with the governor, because we see the value of a statewide direction on stay-at-home. We understand that. And, but that with each passing day, more jurisdictions and states across the country are passing orders requiring residents to limit their travel to only essential functions, and that includes the doctor, grocery store, the essentials. But that we are at the ready to support him to consider, strongly consider making, taking similar actions in the state of Arizona in order to protect the health and safety of the residents of Arizona, and that every city has its unique needs. And so, he needs to be able to hear from all of us mayors so that he can move immediately and swiftly to protect, to make the call of only limiting those workers that provide essential services around the state. That is my update with that. It sounds, in the letter, we also included our concern about statewide evictions and foreclosures. He moved on it. I think that he was hearing from state legislators and mayors throughout the state on this. And so, I'm really happy to communicate with all of you this update. On another front, I have been communicating with our congressional delegation all weekend long. I made calls to Senator Sinema and Senator McSally to encourage them to include direct relief to cities and towns throughout the country. One of the things that is concerning all of us at the mayor and council is that cities run on state sales taxes, on sales taxes. And so, with the stoppage of many of these businesses closing, what is concerning to all of us is that we must provide essential services for the safety and health of the residents of Tucson. Police, fire, transit, water services, trash and recycling pickup, all of these things are the services that we provide with sales taxes. And so, I do have to report to you that our work this weekend went a long way. The third relief package being put together in the Senate will include the language for direct funds for cities and towns across the United States. That is great news, because many times, if the relief, if the aid is sent to the state, it takes a long time for that distribution of those funds to cities. And so, I'm really happy. The House already has that language, and I was assured by our lobbyist, Tracy Tucker, that that language is being added to the Senate package. So, I'm really happy about that. And then, lastly, I wanted to add with you that I have been doing daily calls since last Thursday with regional mayors in Pima County, and on Monday, and their city managers, by the way. And Monday, we started, seemed so long away, it was just yesterday. We included the county administrator and his assistant administrator, John Lesher, and today, Dr. Garcia from the Pima County Health Department joined our call. We also have Chairman Richard Elias join the call. Those are amazing calls that we're having, because we're just touching base, providing updates as to what towns surrounding the City of Tucson are doing. And today's call was especially helpful, because we discussed the stockpile, what Pima County received in terms of masks and protective gear for first responders and healthcare providers. It's been really fast-moving, all of this, but I firmly believe that the more communication we have with each other and with the state and local governments is going to go a long way. Other than that, we did the letter, the communication with our congressional delegation in our mayor's calls. If any of my colleagues would want to add, as our city attorney Rankin suggested to the conversation about nonessential, I'm more than open. Any other questions as well?
Couple of questions.
Councilmember Kozatik.
The only business that really jumps to mind is, are the hookah lounges, and that's one that we could still incorporate if you were to extend your proclamation, because it's not touched by what the governor did. Question for Mike Rankin, the executive order stipulates that we have to go through or confirm with the Arizona Department of Health on any implementation of local policies, extending, extending or expanding the proclamation. Inasmuch as the legislature is always the one who says that the county is an extension of the state, is our consultation with Pima County Health Department equivalent to going through the Arizona Department of Health?
Councilmember Kozatik, mayor, members of the council, it's an interesting question. And what I want to say is that the actual language of the executive order, and first of all, it's only dealing with a future order by a city or town or county that restricts people leaving their home, okay? And what it says is that any such order shall be consistent with the advice from ADHS, okay? And that's really referring to the things that we all hear about in keeping your social distancing in the six feet and all that. Any such restrictions shall be coordinated with the state prior to issuance. So, it doesn't specify which state agency, but I assume that's just referring back to the Department of Health Services.
So, it's not clear?
It's not clear.
The question on evictions that he put out today, does that simply for public properties, or is it for any property?
Let me see here real time.
I believe it's private and in public properties.
It says, yeah, enforcement, delaying any enforcement of eviction action orders for renters impacted by COVID-19. So, it's all renters.
Wow.
Residential rent.
And homeowners.
Okay. Finally, Richard asked a minute ago about unemployment insurance. Pima County One Stop, in the conversation we were having yesterday on the conference call with the shelters, Pima County One Stops are open for people to file unemployment, but they're limiting people to seven per room right now for the reasons of the social distancing. They're referring people to the ADES website, because their phone line is inundated. So, if people, Richard, are wanting to apply for unemployment, ADES website has a means by which you can file for it.
Anything else? Alrighty. Thank you all. Did we, we voted, right?
I had a, I had a question.
Yes, Councilmember Santa Cruz.
This is Councilmember Santa Cruz. Thank you. So, I am wondering right now, what can we, as far as the public health concerned, around, are we planning on setting up washing, more washing stations, and then our public libraries are closed? Are we talking, are we considering talks about having the portable restroom located in areas so that our homeless, houseless folks can, you know, still have access to that, making sure that they're also practicing hygiene for, like, washing hands and all that?
Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, so we've actually ordered more. We have six scattered washing stations now. We have ordered more. They're on back order. We actually were fortunate to get the six that we have. We're monitoring them, and we'll continue to look for more, look for additional stations to help. I know that that's been a challenge for parks and recreation areas as well. So, we will continue to work on that.
One of the issues, Councilmember Santa Cruz, with providing public restrooms or showering stations is the cleaning them. And so, that's one of the questions that some of the mayors throughout the state asked in the governor's calls today, because one of the essential services that the governor called in his executive order is to remain, to keep parks open. called in his executive order is to remain, to keep parks open. And while I understand that we, when we say remain in place and we remain at home, we do want the community to go out and walk and clear their mind and exercise. That does not mean that we have the capacity to clean restrooms in parks, to keep disinfecting playground equipment. So cleaning any public restroom or shower, we have to factor in the disinfecting of these public spaces. So if I may, I'm going to ask Councilmember Kozakic, he has been the lead in working with shelters throughout Tucson. And so I don't know if you'd like to add a couple of additional conversations that you have had with shelters that provide services to the most vulnerable communities, which include our homeless community?
Sure, I can. There's a daily phone call at 10 o'clock that 10 or 15 different shelters are involved with, and Pima County is involved. The city has, thank you, Liz was on the phone call today, was very helpful. To the question of hand washing stations, Casa Maria is serving about 800 people per day. And if we have, when and if those come, you know, the Casa Maria soup kitchen would be a very worthwhile site to place those at. The shelters are all saying food, we need food. Community Food Bank is doing what they can. I was on the phone this morning with a commercial distributor who is losing clients because restaurants are having a tough time right now. And so we're going to do outreach to churches and say, look, if you can provide sack lunches to some of the shelters, we'll put you in touch with them. There is a conversation about shelters right now having to go on remote, staff working from home, and so a lot of the outreach to the clients is being done remotely, to the extent that that's possible, although there still is in-person outreach in some of the encampments. We have a conversation going on right now with Sunvan that maybe, Mike, you can give an update on, to provide transportation resources to some of the shelters so that they can help transport people from shelter to shelter, either for reasons of capacity or sickness. There was a conversation this morning that referenced the Hurricane Katrina, where we stood up the TCC for one central location for housing homeless people who are, again, either sick or in the case of capacity needs. But it was also interesting that yesterday, the county administrator and Sheriff Napier shared an email in which the administrator said he's advised the people at Catholic Community Services that they may need to make Casa Alitas out of the county detention facility available for homeless people as well. So there are lots of different moving pieces to it. If there is one single salient need, it is food. And if people have churches or nonprofits who are willing to help provide that, we can certainly put you in touch with the shelters who need them.
Thank you, Councilmember Kozakic. I mean, I think we heard the same today while we were doing that city hotline. The other concern that I heard was that it's still not very clear who'd be providing medical for those folks that are quarantined, that we are housing but need medical attention. So anytime that comes to light, if you can relay that to us, that would be really helpful to make sure we're getting the word out as far as providing medical attention to homeless folks. But the other thing that I still, like, wanted to reiterate about the bathroom was, we were having a conversation, mayor and council was having a conversation about the self-cleaning portable restrooms a while back. And so I'm wondering, is that something we can revisit at this time? Is that something that we can incorporate? And then can we think, I mean, I know this might be a couple days off, but like, are we considering at some point closing off some of the streets leading to downtown so that people aren't encouraged to kind of congregate in certain areas or bring their car in? To like, yeah, like, how do we start to create these like zones where are intentional that we don't want people driving to?
Councilmember, I just wanted to respond to your health services for houseless, homeless communities. El Rio Health Clinic has services that they provide for homeless populations. And I believe Liz Morales, the Director of Housing Community Development, sent all of mayor and council an update as to how she will be dealing with homeless protocols in the city of Tucson, and it includes that information in there. But El Rio Health Clinic is providing services, health services, to homeless communities. I don't know, Mr. Ortega, if you'd like to answer the rest of her question.
So we, Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, we're working through all of that. It is, with the closure of libraries and some of the other facilities, restroom facilities have been a challenge for us. And we are working through that and trying to identify appropriate locations, those kinds of things. It's very, very fluid, and so we will continue to work on that because that is, as Councilmember Santa Cruz mentioned, an absolute need that we need to address somehow.
But do we still have that, I mean, where did we leave off with that conversation about the self-cleaning portable restrooms? Like, is that something we have in like, in our inventory right now? Or is that just like money that had been set aside for that?
Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, no, we do not have those now. We had explored those at the urging of Councilmember Feimbrus. There was a lot of discussion about even putting one in the downtown area, and that was about a year and a half ago, and there has been no movement on that. We will continue to have discussions. Part of that was actually physically locating one. There was some challenges with that, but this is a new day. We'll certainly dust those off and have more conversation around that.
Okay.
Councilmember Kozakic, could I ask what types of food would be most helpful?
If you have churches who can put together sack lunches, that would be ideal. If you have non-perishables that they, that some of the shelters can store and get to as they have need, that would be the second priority. And finally, the least priority are the perishables that they're going to have to use immediately.
Okay.
Councilmember Durham, do you have any additional questions?
No.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Well, I think that we, as we all said earlier, this is a continuously evolving crisis, and we will continue communicating. I know the city manager does an excellent job in communicating to mayor and council. I will forward any information that I receive from our lobbyists, our federal lobbyists in DC, or any of our congressional offices, so that you're all equally informed as to what's coming from both the state and federal level. Thank you all so much for your support, and I'm very proud of us and our city. I am, I'm very, very proud of us as to where we are, and I know that we can and will continue moving in a unified direction. And I appreciate your motion and in being able to give me the leeway and the flexibility to take quick action, because every action, every hour that passes affects the public health of our community. So with that, anything that you'd like to add, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Attorney?
Mayor, I don't know that I need to add anything, but I would suggest, if you just bear with us, I think it would be appropriate, because the motion is so important, that maybe the city clerk reread it, just so that there's clarity. I think there was maybe some opportunity for misunderstanding some of it, because we did talk a lot about shelter in place, and that was not the motion. The motion was a little different than that, so I want to make sure that there's clarity there. So if you don't mind, Mayor indulging, maybe the city clerk to read that motion one more time.
The motion reads, I move that the mayor and council...
Okay. It's not exactly on right? Okay.
As a full body endorses and supports the mayor's March 17 determination that the COVID-19 outbreak constitutes a local emergency under Arizona law and the Tucson City Charter, and that we also find that this continuing and expanding emergency endangers both life and property within the city and will require extraordinary measures to protect public health and safety. We support the mayor's use of the emergency powers given to her under Arizona law to protect our residents and our own employees. I also move that the city of Tucson, through the mayor, continue to coordinate with Governor Ducey and other key decision makers in responding to the impacts of this emergency, and that we urge Governor Ducey to take additional actions, including the immediate issuance of statewide shelter in place orders directing the closure of nonessential functions and businesses. At least 15 other states have already done so. These orders provide for the continuity of essential functions and operations throughout the state while slowing the spread of COVID-19. Finally, I move that as part of the actions we take in response to this emergency, we take steps to provide assistance to our local businesses and their employees. And then there was additional direction regarding the evictions of tenants.
And the number was 17 and not 15?
Yeah, 17 states now.
17 states.
Thank you. So, good? Good, thank you, Mr. City Manager. With that, thank you all, and we are going to move to item two, which is the liquor license approval process, and then move immediately after that to item three, five, seven, nine, and 11, which are executive sessions. And we will remain here to do executive sessions, but we'll ask everyone in the room to leave after item two. So item two, time has been set aside for discussion of the liquor license approval process. Mr. Clerk.
Your Honor, as we go forward with the COVID crisis that we're currently under, there may be situations that arise where the mayor and council will be unable to meet. And so we would have liquor license applications pending that would not have mayor and council approval. Currently, as it stands, mayor and council are required to provide that approval. However, under these circumstances, you could authorize me to approve those on your behalf and forward those to the state liquor board. Actually, I would be, I would be forwarding them with your recommendation of approval. The caveat to that would be if we have applications that are not in compliance with city requirements or have written arguments in opposition, those would not be forwarded to the state, but they would be held. If it was a regular license, we would ask the state to continue that item. If it was a special event, then the application would be considered denied at that point.
Because of the special event limitations?
Yes.
Can I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve the proposed liquor license process.
Check it.
There's a motion and a second. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Oh, no, I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay. So there's a motion and a second roll call?
McSanta Cruz?
Here. Ken, aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Feimbrus?
Aye.
Mr. Kozakic?
Aye.
Mayor O'Meara?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. So items three, five, seven, and nine, and 11 are executive sessions. Mr. Clerk.
Your Honor, the first executive session is noted as item three, executive session, potential sublease or other disposition of city leased property located at the northeast quadrant of 22nd Street and westbound I-10 Frontage Road. It is being held pursuant to ARS section 38-431.03A, 3A, 4, and A7. The second executive session is noted as item five, executive session, potential sale of Tucson Metro Chamber Building. It is being held pursuant to ARS section 38-431.03A, 3A, 4, and A7. The third executive session is noted as item seven, executive session, La Muto versus City of Tucson, Pima County Superior Court Case Number C20181477. It is being held pursuant to ARS section 38-431.03A, 3, and A4. The fourth executive session is noted as item nine, executive session, potential sale of city-owned property located at the northeast corner of Silverbell Road and Goree Road, and is being held pursuant to ARS section 38-431.03A, 3, A4, and A7. The final executive session is noted as item 11, executive session, City of Tucson Claim Number 191194, Tucson Electric Power versus City of Tucson, and is being held pursuant to ARS section 38-431.03A, 3, and A4.
Mr. Attorney.
Mayor, members of council, so a motion to move into executive session would be appreciated for this particular meeting. As I mentioned earlier, the normal rules about participating by phone have been suspended, so the council members who are participating remotely by phone will be able to participate in this executive session. What will happen is we will kill the live stream because there's no public right to listen to or watch an executive session. That's sort of the point of them. And so rather than just show either an empty room or something else, we'll end the live stream. Normally, for executive session, we recess into the back room, but in order to keep our connections with everybody participating by phone, what instead we're going to do is we're going to clear the room out, and we're going to stay here and hold the executive sessions from where we are. But that assumes we get a motion first to go into executive session.
May I have a motion to go into executive session?
That appear, I vote.
There's a motion?
That's true.
In a second? Alrighty, so do we need a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alrighty, roll call?
McSanta Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Feimbrus?
Aye.
Mr. Kozakic?
Mayor O'Meara.
Aye. The executive session will be conducted here in the chambers. At this time, all individuals not involved in the executive session should exit the room. Any individuals teleconferencing other than council members need to disconnect.